Welcome, everyone. I, Council President Walsh, call the April 28 Committee of the Whole meeting to order at 6:31 PM. As a reminder, we always continue to have a remote aspect to our meetings, so we've got staff and potentially members of the public participating in tonight's meeting remotely via WebEx. There are multiple public comment opportunities at tonight's meeting. There's a general public comment opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, or you can make comments after the presentation, and council question and answer period on tonight's agenda items. So with public comment, members of the public may address council at this time in person or virtually. Those who signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. If you're joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand. If you're on a phone, press star three. If you've joined by computer or smartphone, look for the hand icon, or send the host a chat message. If you're in the room and did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. And I will wait for a moment. Do we have anyone online? We do not. And does anyone in person wish to make a comment? Thank you. Okay. As a reminder, written comments can be submitted at any time to citycouncil@isiquawawa.gov. Okay. So we've got two items on our agenda tonight. We've got COM 0135, which is a windstorm follow-up, and then COM 0136, a first-quarter update. So our first item is the windstorm follow-up presented by Jared Schneider, our emergency manager. There you are, Jared. Fantastic.
And Council President, if I may just make some introductory comments before we let Jared get on with his presentation. So we're here tonight to talk emergency management broadly and specifically. Specifically first, to talk about the bomb cyclone, arguably one of the larger natural disasters that we have faced in a community for some time. We've asked Jared to come this evening and talk about the after-action report that he has completed, and he's going to go through the highlights of that, of what was learned. The second piece of this comes out of your retreat from several weeks ago, where the council identified five top areas of focus for the year, one of which was emergency preparedness. And as the administration went through that list after that meeting and kind of assessed where we thought we were at in meeting those challenges that you all set forth for us this year, we kind of took some pause with emergency management, that with what's going on, what went on in Southern California, with the wildfires, what has gone on since President Trump has taken office, and the changes there with his approach with emergency management nationally. We thought it would be useful to kind of talk a little bit more about where we're at, and perhaps what additional resources we may need in order to really address the issue as you would like it addressed. We're not proposing this evening to add staff members, we're not proposing this evening to ask for more money, but we are kind of just wanting to get a temperature from you, kind of revisit the discussion that you had several weeks ago, hear from Jared about what he thinks that if we were to put additional resources towards this, what those resources could accomplish, and get some feedback from you. If this is something you'd like us to pursue, we'll come back at a future meeting to talk some more. If given everything else that we're facing, certainly you'll hear later on from Andrea, some of the larger issues we're also facing, if this makes sense, just to kind of keep an eye on as we move forward, we can do that, too. But I wanted to kind of set the stage first before we let Jared move forward. So unless, Council President, there are any initial questions, we'll let Jared go forward. Jared, good evening.
All right. Thank you, Wally. Thanks for teeing up the conversation perfectly. So I'm going to go ahead here and share my screen. Does that look all right on everyone else's end there?
Yes, it looks good. Thank you.
Okay. Great. And thank you, everybody. I apologize for being virtual tonight. Of course, I would prefer to be there in person, as I usually am, but had some family matters that actually pulled me out of state, so I had to pivot a little bit with the virtual meeting. So just appreciate your understanding, but it's always a pleasure to talk to you about emergency management, what we're doing here at the city, and share some information. So as Wally mentioned, what we are currently working on here is, or what we're here to talk about today, is additional lessons learned from the bomb cyclone. So, you know, I've had the opportunity to speak to you about it a couple times, but as Wally mentioned, we finished our after-action review, at least the first draft, and we have some major highlights that I would like to share with you all. And then, too, to talk about what the future of this emergency management program at the city could look like, especially given the very quick-changing nature of what national disaster response looks like in our country. So with that, to kind of set the table, I wanted to highlight some of our final numbers from the windstorm. The first is about debris removal. So we have approximately 800, or had approximately 800, tons of debris removed through this event. 114 tons were actually removed through our community debris events, where there was 647 vehicle trips. If you recall, we had three events where we partnered with Recology, Parks Public Works, our CERT members, our sustainability team, to all come together to have one location where individuals could actually bring some of their debris and their vehicles and drop it off, and have it removed. So that's a pretty solid throughput for those events, and it really highlights, right, the community need for this type of offering. I want to talk about tree damage. We had about 250 to 300 park trees lost, with another additional 1,000 lost in open spaces. For our resilience hubs, all totaled, we had about 1,700 visitors sheltered in three different locations, one being the Senior Center, second being Pickering Barn, and the third, in partnership with Isquah School District, being Cougar Mountain Middle School. And then also, an additional resilience hub site, our Isquah Food and Clothing Bank, they distribute about 500 people emergency food. And so that is a significant number, too, also just highlighting the scale of the event that we were under. In terms of private property damage, we had nine homes were red-tagged. As a reminder, those are homes that are deemed inhabitable by our building official, and then 17 homes were yellow-tagged, which means they sustained some level of damage, albeit like something, for example, like one-bedroom. So you can't use one-bedroom in your house because a tree came through it. We had 36 businesses reporting some level of economic damage. I would say that number's probably much higher, given lots of business to just Isquah businesses during the windstorm, but 36 officially reported. In terms of survivor assistance, keep in mind, these are countywide numbers, because we weren't the owners of this data, we couldn't aggregate it just to Isquah. In terms of small business administration loans, there was 518 applicants submitted, 185 loans totaling 12.8 million were offered, and there was 160 disbursements totaling 6.4 million were made. So as a reminder, those are like low-interest loans that are available after any given disaster meeting a certain threshold. The second program was Washington State's Individual Assistance Program. There was 50 applicants for that program, and nine received funds. To qualify for that program, you had to not only sustain severe damage to your property, but also be well below income thresholds throughout the state, so much below the low-income level. In terms of city response and recovery costs, we have an estimated $3.8 million in damages, and we're hopeful that number will come down, given some, as we're starting to understand our financial situation a little bit better, as we're getting really full, a better picture with recovery. So now to talk about our after-action review. So if you're unfamiliar with this term, this is really a standard practice for cities, for fire departments, police departments to do following any disaster or emergency. And really what it does is it just boils down our strengths and areas for improvement following a response. The way that we feed this report is we collect data through something called hotwashes, which is where you get everyone together, usually pretty quick after the event's over, and you just, you air it all out, right? You talk about what went well, what didn't go well, and really identify some of those preliminary areas where like, you know what, when it comes to the next event, we want to be better in this way. The next way is through surveys. So a survey was sent to all responders, asking them for feedback for similar areas, things that went well, things that didn't, and suggestions on how we can improve. And then interviews. So in some cases, I would sit down with a member from the city or otherwise, and drill a little deeper into a certain topic, so we can get a full understanding of what went well and what didn't in any given mission area. In total, we identified 48 different items that were identified for follow-ups, so being ones that, you know, something that we'll revisit, that we will come back to, and something called our improvement plan to highlight, and to really make sure that when it comes to the next disaster and emergency, that same weakness, ideally, will not happen again. So to talk about our primary mission areas, and our scorecard, if you will, we had emergency coordination, debris management, resilience hubs, infrastructure and generators, connectivity, public safety, rapid impact survey, and public communication, as kind of the main areas that the after-action review highlighted. And then there was really four different potential categories that we can grade ourselves with. One was performed without challenge, second was performed with some challenge, third performed with major challenges, and the last unable to be performed. And ultimately, we performed all of them, but with some challenges. So it's maybe not the most interesting scorecard, since it's all the same, but it's true of our response. You know, there wasn't anything that we weren't, that we were unable to do. You know, most things we were able to do, but with just a few minor areas, or few little areas that we needed to improve on. So frankly, I think that's pretty good for our event. I wanted to highlight five major things from our after-action review, to just bring them to your attention, to know specifically what our biggest takeaways were from this event. And the first one is utilizing our formal emergency operations center structure. So while everyone felt, to some extent, that there was good coordination happening between city departments, external partners, and other government entities, we felt like there could be some growth, right, in filling out some of these key roles in our EOC that would create less problems during our response, and ultimately make things run smoother. You know, the example that I think of is lunch, for example, was sometimes delayed. And when you have public works and parks crews out there cutting, you know, trees for 12 hours at a time, in some cases, right, like making sure that those individuals are fed, especially when it's hard to find food following a disaster like this, is really important. And so we were actually missing a role within our EOC structure that would have typically covered that type of responsibility. So having a more built-out and formalized EOC will help alleviate some of those issues. The second is creating more resiliency in backup power generators, fuel acquisition, and knowledge base. So as you know, the city relies on backup power generators for powering critical infrastructure, resilience hubs, and many other sites, you know, that really keep the city running as our residents expect it. Now, this responsibility is really handled out of one division within our team, and within that division, you know, it happens to be there's one person, or one and a half, really, who have good knowledge of our generators, right? And so that's a potential single point of failure, to where if that individual couldn't make it into work, then in some cases, you know, we could be, we could have challenges in future events. So the big takeaway from that is that, you know, we need to make sure that we have things written down, right, standard operating procedures, and other information that, you know, regardless of who's actually able to make it into the city, right, we can perform these necessary functions. And, you know, we called out generators in this event, right, but this is really common across cities, right? Sometimes there is only one or two people that, you know, know how to do something in a smallish city to medium-sized city. So making sure that we have good transfer of knowledge is essential for future events. Next is initiate a community rapid impact survey post-disaster earlier in the incident. So this was the first time that I'm aware that our building officials and engineers actually did a community rapid impact survey. As a reminder, this is where we sent teams out to look at homes falling into disaster, to identify any ones that may be potentially unsafe or uninhabitable. That kind of filled that red and yellow tag numbers out. You know, it should, it could have happened quicker. That's something that we came away with. I think it was something like 54 hours after the event until when it was initiated. And so we need to make sure that whenever there's a disaster, and it's safe to put our crews out onto the road, to look around, and make sure these homes and areas, you know, are safe for our residents, it just needs to happen early in the incident. So that's a great takeaway, and one that we're happy to carry into future events. Next is better prepare resilience hubs for operations of this scale. We had done some initial planning for our resilience hubs in leading up to this event, but it was really quite a new idea at the city. We had just finalized some of our initial plans for it in late September before the bomb cyclone, and man, those initial plans got tested pretty quick after that. So one thing that we learned, though, is that there were some challenges, right, in running these sites. And we had some sites, such as Blakely Hall, that wasn't even able to open despite being a resilience hub. So identifying things like, okay, you know, what's a potential redundant power supply or power source for Blakely Hall, you know, what's an operations plan, you know, for them? Those are the types of conversations that our resilience hubs are having, you know, and there's a whole slew of other items for our city-run ones, you know, that we're also having to better prepare and make sure that we're ready for the next event. Lastly, I want to talk about debris management. So while it was handled effectively, there's much more that we can do to better learn about how to understanding, or to better understand best practices when it comes to this topic. This event, it really strained not only the city, but the region when it comes to debris removal, you know, and to be frank, this was a fairly isolated event, right? We're talking Isquah, some Amish portions of unincorporated King County that were really hit hard, and it really grinded to a halt the regional system for a few days. And so that's just a, that's a huge area to highlight for future growth, because, you know, take something like a big earthquake, right, we're going to have not only just trees and woody debris, right, we're going to have things like buildings and other types of debris that we may need to find a place to temporarily house, or store, or keep sequestered in some cases, if it's like hazardous material following an event, to make sure that we can, you know, maintain public safety and get everything cleaned up. So we're planning on updating our debris management plan following this event with some of the lessons that we've learned from the bomb cyclone, but also carrying in and seeking out more knowledge from other partners in other jurisdictions who've gone through large-scale events in the past. So those are the highlights of our after-action review. As I had mentioned, there is much more in that report that we're going to be working on behind the scenes to make sure that we're better prepared for the next event. But what I wanted to shift to now is really the changes that are occurring in disaster response and preparedness at a national level that's trickling down to us here in the cities. And so I'm sure you're all aware, are all aware of FEMA's denial of our presidentially declared disaster, of which the state is appealing. But this is, all indications is, this is going to be the new normal for local jurisdictions. Keep in mind, everything, we're still operating in a lot of uncertainty. When I put together this slide about a week and a half ago, you know, we, I put it together as-is, but just this morning, right, we received a new memo with additional details saying that, you know, FEMA's planning on increasing the amount of damage that it takes at local jurisdictions to get that disaster declared, right? But everything is changing very quickly. We're trying to keep pace with all the changes, not only here at Isquah, but at the county and the state, but we're trying to remain responsive to this information in this changing landscape. That being said, one thing that we know for certain is that more responsibility is going to be put on local jurisdictions. That's what's been consistent across all the messages and the communication that we've heard about FEMA, is that the responsibility typically, or historically held by FEMA, will now be shifted more to state, county, and local jurisdictions for disaster response and recovery. So with that, too, there's a diminishing of federal grant opportunities, which we really tap into to help better prepare Isquah for future events as well, and really an important part of what our emergency management program tries to achieve here, right, at the city. We're not only responding and recovering from disasters, right, we're preparing for the next ones, and trying to make our city more resilient. And so the diminishing of these federal grant opportunities leaves some big question marks, right, of where these projects will potentially be funded. So that's kind of the landscape that we're operating in. And so I found it quite timely, the council retreat conversation about emergency management staffing. And so given that this is the backdrop, right, of our new normal, if you will, around disasters and emergencies, I wanted to highlight, as Wally said, some of our potential areas that we could potentially build out our program, and some of the, and some of the ways that it would actually play out in our community, and the benefits that it would bring. So what you see here is a simple table for our, for an emergency preparedness coordinator with 20 hours, 28 hours, and 48 hours. So the first option that I see is hiring an additional staff, a part-time staff member at 20 hours, and really what this individual would be responsible for is increasing the preparedness of our residents. Now, we all know, you take an event, something like a, like an earthquake, right, it could be quite some time for the city to really be out on the streets, responding, helping individuals, right? So really, the most important thing that we can do as an emergency management entity is make sure that our residents and our community is prepared for disasters, because there can be a serious lurch in between when we're able to provide services. So what this would look like for this individual is they would be providing disaster skills training. So that's like little miniature seminars where, you know, individuals are taught the most important things that they need to really survive these types of disasters. Taking advantage of our community events, right? Isquah has so many community events, it's wonderful, and we want to make sure that we have a presence from emergency management at these events to make sure that this information is available wherever people are. Next is resilience hub awareness, right? I still, today, will talk to residents that had no idea that our resilience hubs were open, right, during the bomb cyclone, or even knew that this was something that the city is investing its time and energy into. And so, you know, one of the potential ideas is to have miniature parties, if you will, at these resilience hubs, where people can get to know their neighbors, get familiar with the services available at these resilience hubs, and ultimately, you know, just help foster the sense of community that is so important after a disaster. And then one other item to highlight, too, is we're doing so much around wildfire now. As you all know, we have our wildfire evacuation study, where we've just got the first initial results from, which I'm very excited to share the results of soon. But all this information, right, is going to need to be shared with the community, and we need to really prepare our residents for what evacuation looks like for something like a wildfire. And since that's a relatively new hazard that we're having to plan for here in Isquah, that's something where, you know, many people are going to have to, are going to have to learn about. The next step up is our part-time 28-hours position. And so this includes everything you just heard me talk about, preparing the community, but it also includes providing some advanced CERT training. So our CERT teams are our community emergency response volunteer groups that have gone through a, that have gone through a training that is sponsored by the city through Isquah Civilian, or Isquah Civilian Council. And they have this, they help us out in disasters, they help us out in emergencies, but they also help spread the word about disaster preparedness. I was at the last class recently, and I was asking some of the members who were taking the CERT class, like, what brought you here? And what they were saying was, other CERT members that had already graduated were telling them that they should take it, right, because now they feel so much more prepared for disasters and emergencies. So keeping them engaged, giving them the tools and capabilities to help their community or their immediate neighborhood following a disaster is really essential, too, right? Residents are going to be the first people impacted by a disaster, or community members will be. And so making sure that we have a high level of training for them is essential and a worthy investment. Now, lastly, the full-time position, again, it includes everything that you've already heard me talk about with the 20-20-hour position, but includes more frequent emergency exercises for staff. And so what this looks like is bringing us up to probably two annual emergency exercises, where they're, you know, either discussion-based or full-scale exercises, where we actually, you know, practice directly the skills that are essential for coordinating or operating in an emergency. But then also, too, we want to have more robust, smaller bite-sized drills, where it keeps these skills sharp, right? So we're talking like lightning drills, like 30 minutes where, you know, responders get together either virtually or in person, and we cover maybe one topic, right, to just make sure that emergencies and disasters are front of mind, since, you know, they're happening frequently, and they can happen at any time. So I see that as very essential for the city, and making sure that we can continue to protect our community as best as possible. So with that, that pretty much sums up everything that I was planning on sharing today. And so, again, to bring it up to the top is, one, are there additional lessons learned or items you would like us to explore from the bomb cyclone? And then what level of emergency management staffing should the city pursue or consider in the future? And I'm going to stop sharing my screen here, so I can get a better look at the council chambers.
Thanks, Jared. So council, any question and answers before public comment, and then till feedback? No questions? Councilmember Ray.
This is related to the part-time position, the 20-hours, Jared. So you bring incredible knowledge and skillset around disaster management to the city. What level of skill would we need to fill this kind of position? Is this a mini Jared, or is this something where I can, I could use someone who had really great organizational and administrative skills? What's your take on the skillset required to perform, particularly in the 20-hour slot? But you can, you know, go up the chain if you want.
Yeah, thank you. So what I imagine specifically for the 20-hour spot is someone who, yes, has good organizational skills, but one, just really has a heart and a passion for the community, and is a good communicator, really. You know, that public education piece, right, is mostly going to be, or yeah, a limit of that job is mostly going to be interfacing with the community, right? So being comfortable in the situations, and really, I think, in some ways, being empathetic to the situation, how challenging that these disasters and emergencies can be, will just really serve that person well. And, you know, I think as you do move up that chain, right, I think really at that full-time position is where we're looking for more of those hard and fast emergency management skills, right? So, you know, hopefully some level of disaster and emergency response, I think, would really bolster and serve that individual well in that full-time position, but really more in that part-time, right? I see as someone who's passionate and a good communicator as being the strongest skillsets that that would require for success.
That's awesome. Thanks so much.
Councilmember Hall?
Thank you. Kind of similarly, I wanted to ask about like partnerships with community groups. Like I know of one, and you do, too, with Lindsey Pinkstein of the Highlands Council up in the Highlands have been like super involved in like emergency management and training, and I think they're running a CERT class or in partnership with the city up there, too. I was wondering, too, if you could talk about kind of partnerships with community groups in being able to like disseminate training and awareness out in the community as well.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Hall. So relying on our community partners and groups is something that we absolutely do. And really, the main vehicle that we're doing that in right now is through our resilience hub group. You know, we have all these individual locations that serve as resilience hubs, but our network is actually much larger, right? So what typically the community sees as a place that's open, right, but we have groups that are part of our resilience hub planning group and core team, where, for example, like the Circle, who they translated our flyers into Mandarin and Spanish during the bomb cyclone, that we could actually, you know, physically distribute, right? So we're finding that this, like group of, group of partners is really helping us get the word out. And so post-bomb cyclone, this group has been really growing. We're looking at it adding a couple additional resilience hubs, but also we've had many other partner groups approach us, asking us how they can be more involved within the city's response in future disasters and emergencies. So what I imagine the way that this would practically play out, right, is, and this is already kind of happening to some extent, we have a few things planned for the summer, but, you know, we'll get some information, or whether it's a program that we have that we want to promote, and we'll ask our resilience hubs to either, you know, have some of these, whether it's print, or whether it's just information, or whether it's partnership in some of these programs, to see if they could help us, right, get the word out about this, whatever it is. And they just have a reach that far extends, you know, what the city does by itself, right? Like our comms team does incredible work, right, but, you know, not everyone's always plugged into our communications, right? But they may be plugged into, as you mentioned, you know, Blakely Hall. Like maybe they're up there for an event, and they see something about wildfire evacuation. And so that's just, that's the dream, right? That's wonderful, because that just makes us, you know, reach a much wider audience. So it plays a huge role, and it's something that, yeah, we're actively investing in and growing.
Thank you. That's great. And then two more questions. One, clarifying, so like the part-time role in particular, I love the focus on like training and awareness, that seems just right, is the idea that like this is kind of what you do now, because you do everything, and this would free you up to focus on kind of other important priorities, or these are things that we don't have capacity to do right now, and bringing on a part-time staffer would allow us to do this scope of work now?
Yeah. Great question. So currently, our team really is, it's me plus a 16-hour-a-week intern. And so what I would say is, we do some of those things a little bit, right, but we don't do them enough, honestly. And so, you know, and to be honest, I'm a little spread thin when it comes to, you know, all of these, all of these events, these plans, you know, and of course, like whenever there's a response, right? And so there is some level of that, too, right? But really what this position would bring is much more, right, of what you are seeing. And some of them will be new, some of them are things that we want to do. Some of them are things that we want to do otherwise, right? Like realistically, our disaster skills training is just something that we don't really have time to, to, to really sustain as, as a division, right? But that's something that we really need in our community. And so, you know, like while we'll do a little bit of, of everything, you know, um, on occasion, it, it would in some cases create new programs.
Thank you very much. Um, is it okay if I ask one more? Um, just to clarify, and this might be a, a question for administration staff too, did we have any, do you happen to know off the top of your head if we had any questions in the community survey, the community survey around emergency management or, or anything like that that might give us a, a good picture into what the community's thinking around how we should think about emergency management resources? Seeing some potential head nods.
I believe so. I believe there was at least one question around just emergency response.
Yep. Okay. Um, Councilmember Jiang, did you have questions? Okay, I think you were next and then Deputy Counsel.
Great. Yeah, thanks for this presentation. Um, I really appreciate, you know, looking, um, on the debris management piece you mentioned, you know, that's kind of, that was a bottleneck in the bomb cyclone. And if we were, you know, the potentially like biggest, most catastrophic disaster we could get is like the magnitude nine earthquake. So I'm curious, like are there other areas that could be constraints in that type of situation? You know, we could get a power outage that lasts more than 10 days. Um, so, you know, what are some of the areas there that maybe the bomb cyclone made us realize, oh, you know, we can survive 10 days, but that's kind of the limit of it? Um, so yeah, curious kind of about that.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, I think, um, one other area, right, that I think about is, is getting staff physically to, to location, right? And in a big earthquake, our whole transportation network is going to be so fractured. Um, part of one of our previous emergency, uh, active, or drills or exercises that we did rather, on one of our trainings for our EOC, uh, we had people count like the number of bridges that they took to actually get to the EOC. And in some cases it was like in the, in like the 30s, I think, for our furthest, you know, um, for our furthest employee. So that's another area, right? So like just identifying, um, those levels of redundancy, right, and training and expertise, I think is, is very crucial. Uh, communication was a huge one, right? Uh, we lost, uh, internet, not only internet, but T-Mobile, right, for, for quite a while too and cell coverage, you know, within the city. So it really helped us understand what the resources available that some of our cell providers, um, have available. So, um, that was a huge takeaway. You know, they actually brought like a little, uh, mobile, um, mobile radio or cellphone antenna actually out to Isiqua and stationed it right in front of the community center to help, you know, support getting residents back online, uh, and, and have phone service. But our whole communication network is going to be very fractured, you know, following a big event like that. Um, those are the main ones that come to my mind, uh, just off the top of my head. But, you know, falling in 9.0 earthquake, right, we're, uh, we're not going to always have also too, the ability to rely and lean on our neighbors like we, like we did even in this, in, in this event, right? We were able to, um, rely on the city of Kent for a few things and some, and the county for, for some others, right? And so everyone's going to be in that situation, right? And so we're going to be very isolated, which again, I think just really stresses the need that, you know, we need to make sure that our residents are prepared, that we're prepared to operate in a really low resource environment.
Council, uh, Deputy Counsel President De Michele.
Thanks, Jared. Um, I sent you an email and thank you very much for your response. And I, I want to ask the same questions in public so we can possibly have this conversation. Uh, if the federal government is no longer going to support or, or help a local communities to recover, uh, and in your response, you also indicated that the state is having a conversation about also eliminating that, uh, support. Can you discuss, uh, what, if anything, is already in place or in motion to help Washington cities recover from emergencies? And how can we as a city, as the city of Isiqua, explore creating more buffers against severe emergency costs? Because this is a real blow to our, and this is really a relatively small emergency, but this is a real blow to our, to our budget and our financial planning as a city. So if you could kind of discuss what's happening and then what might potentially happen as well? Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. So, um, what I would say is, yeah, keep in mind, right, we're still operating in this high level of uncertainty when it comes to the future of, of things like federal funding for disasters. Um, you know, the Washington state itself has really looked into and explored, um, creating a similar program at the state level that's been left unfunded. So really what it would look like is what we're used to, um, with the federal government using the same criteria for damages, for impacts. And really, you know, the state would kind of have this public assistance program that could help local jurisdictions. Now, since it's gone unfunded in previous state budget cycles, but actually the framework does exist and it is there within the state emergency management division. Um, you know, what I think a lot of us local emergency managers are really curious about is, and kind of waiting with bated breath is to see if the state steps up to that role, right? Like if they're going to actually try to, um, and to what level, right, that they'll try to fill that federal void in, in public assistance programming. And right now, you know, we actually just don't have answers because I think they're also, you know, kind of waiting in this level of uncertainty. And, you know, historically, as you mentioned to, uh, Councilmember De Michele, Deputy President, uh, De Michele is that, you know, the state, uh, historically has funded 12.5% of, of, uh, costs per disaster, right? And, and nothing's set yet with their decision on that, you know? We're still hopeful that they continue to keep that precedent. Um, but that is another avenue that we potentially have and, and will have in the future. Now that's just a drop in a bucket, right? Leaving the city with 87.5% of their remaining cost during, during, uh, an event, but it's something. Um, now the other, now one other thing too, that I actually didn't mention in that initial email is, the state has actually looked into passing some legislature too, that actually asks, um, insurance agencies to charge a premium, um, to support post-disaster costs. Um, this is something that Florida and a couple other states have done to help kind of ease the impacts and, and the burdens on the, on the federal, um, or on the disaster cost recovery type frameworks that already exist. And so I know there's some exploration and rehashing of conversations around that particular legis, piece of legislation. But again, you know, I don't have too much details to share with that, on that right now. Um, all that to say, I think we're all, um, we're all kind of coming to terms with what you highlighted, right? Is that this insurance policy, if you will, right, from the federal government is, is kind of going away, right? And so I think there's going to need to be some serious conversations at the county and state level of what the future of that looks like. And, um, you know, anyone else or Wally, I would also invite you to add any other insights that you have, you know? Emergency management doesn't always have a full comprehensive view of everything that's, that's going on specifically in terms of, of funding, right? So I, I would say if there's anything else to add, please do.
So with that, I think that's all of the questions that we have. So we have an opportunity for public comment on this item. Do we have anybody, okay, come up? If you would press the button on there and state your name and your comment.
Thank you, ma'am. My name's Kyung Han. I'm living 1695 Pineview Drive Northwest Isaquah. This is my third time today. Thank you for your given time for five minutes to present my common public matters. And I'd like to speak very directly to prosecutors and city of police officers. I asking prosecutors, please provide evidences. I looked at the file, I find a few pictures and then one of them is this gentleman. This one is public record, so I can show them in the public record. I didn't see any his faces, victimized face. He's smiling and he's joking. And then this gentleman too, he speak about is I twisted his arm. They have four different comment. One comment from the Costco managers, Costco manager is no physical contact. And this man said, I touching his hand like this. And this man said, I twisted his arm. But when I, it happened within 30 seconds or less than one minute. I'm here, this car was here, only very good visibility is the right side, but this man was not there. That Caucasian man was there. He said, it's not worth it, do not argue. So I walk away to the tire centers and this man said that I twisted his arm. It's lying. Lying is a big matter in public, especially lying to the police department, that's criminal. When I was in law school, my professor told everybody, what world make peace is not love. I can love this guy. I can love this guy. What, what make world peace is contract. I got this shirt because my son working at the lifeguard has a clear line. Did I break the law? No, I'm not. Did I touch him? No, I'm not. I told prosecutors, show me the evidence. Did I touch him? No. They give you all different files, I look at everywhere. I didn't see anything. So I asking city of Isaquah, so city of policies is work for the this man or city of policies work for the public? You know, this one is big matter, conflict of interest. If the city of policies work for him, that's not, not right. Because the city of police, Isaquah, is work for the public, public matter. This man called the police officer using his personal gun and accusing me to assault. Look at his face. He's not victimized, he's smiling, he's bigger than me, young, strong. I didn't touch him. And I told police officer many times, no, lying to the public is a crime. I didn't touch him and he said, they're not going to do anything say that. And I took the prosecutors, they, they said, no, if you call the prosecutors, it's against you. So I don't have a choice. I have two kid, one kid is going to the college, it's the fourth year in the Purdue University. My daughter's in college. I can spend five to $10,000 hire the attorney, but I'm double jeopardy because I spend my money and spend all my time prove I'm innocent. What do I get? Nothing. That's not fair system. What fair system is if lying to the public, if this man stand come here to witnesses, it means something. But when he talked to the police officers, lying about it and police officer taking his speaking as evidences, that's not, I mean, trial is in May 6th, it's free trial. Then at the time, court will decide is it, is going to trial or not. But I let make sure prosecutors or police officers charge everybody, charge me, charge him, charge this guy. Because lying to the police officer is a crime. And I told you last time, if I convicted the, if I touch him, if I break the law, I will give a million dollars donation to city, I will stand jail rest of my life. I will swear, I didn't touch him. But I'm was so sad because the city of Isaquah police officers working is not fairly. If fairly, they should charge him. Charge this man as lying to the public, charge this him as lying to the public. And also this guy, he almost tried to hit me with a car. That's, I don't know, that's very dangerous assaulting. I'm not the legal background, I'm a businessman. I never threatening people with a car or any weapon. He driving toward to me, that's I got a videotape, I got a push cam. But police officer, they not charge him at all. So I have a 20 second, but I'm humbly and clearly decisively tell the prosecutors and the city of policies, city of police Isaquah is not work for him, work for public. Work for public means people can't lie to the police officer. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do we have anyone online? Okay. So no other public comments at this time. So getting back to the comm 0135, the windstorm follow-up, um, we had a few kind of questions. Jared, do you think you could put the questions back up just so that we can reframe that? So I think I'd like to take conversation in two areas. One is, do we have any feedback on the bomb cyclone emergency? Kind of anything that we want to reference for that? And then we can talk about larger emergency management, how it relates to what we said at, um, the retreat and this potential proposal. So starting out with the, um, kind of lessons learned or items you'd like to discuss from the bomb cyclone? Anyone have any comments or thoughts there? Councilmember Hall?
Yeah, just one. And Jared, you'd kind of mentioned communications already in response to your question too. And we talked about a little bit at the last, um, kind of follow-up at council, but, you know, I ju, I think that this is a, a real opportunity for focus or a real need for focus around communication, both with community. I mean, I was lucky enough to know a little bit about what's going on because my city phone had service every now and then. Like my phone, my real phone didn't have any service, like ever. And, and so things that were going out on Facebook, on Twitter, I didn't, you know, I didn't see any of that. So like, like what are, what are the mechanisms? What are the tools at our disposal? CERT volunteers, paper, the, oh, the, what's the thing? The little sign that we have with papers that people can grab? A word on the street, those like word on the street things? I know there was one at Blakely Hall, at least that people saw. So like, you know, I just wanted to say for the record, you know, I, I imagine this is part of the after-action report, um, but, you know, I think this requires some focus from the city in terms of what's our infrastructure for really communicating with the community during something like this. So that's my only other thought.
Okay. Anybody else? Deputy Counsel President De Michele?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, Jared, first of all, I think, uh, I want to thank you for what I would call a really professional response. And, uh, we've identified five areas of weaknesses that we really need to work on. So I appreciate that too, a very straightforward and honest assessment. Uh, and I appreciate you reaching out and getting feedback from a, a lot of other people. As I said, uh, and I do take your point that we are in unknown territory right now and we really can't make any decisions going forward until we have a lot more data. But I would hope that the city would be looking for opportunities to mitigate the financial blows that we took during the bomb cyclone and, uh, realizing that any future emergency could be absolutely devastating to the city financially. So whatever we can do in terms of advocacy, leadership, um, toward developing an alternative to FEMA, I think that the city should pursue that. And I just, um, you know, we've been the leader on many different initiatives and I think this is one area of where we have a perfect case study to show to other cities and to the state and to the region about how an event can dramatically affect, uh, a city's budget. So I would just hope that we would take the initiative to pursue, uh, alternates to FEMA and see what we can do either locally, regionally, or statewide to replace that lost funding. So thank you.
I'll, I'll go ahead and go on that. Jared, seconding the, it was amazing seeing you at work, um, during the emergency management and the EOC ran quite well. I like, uh, much that you've highlighted of areas that we did have success. Having been at the senior center resilience hub, um, for quite a portion of that emergency. Some of my thoughts there are, yes, food and hydration, we managed to succeed on, um, both for the public and for the staff, but really only because we had neighboring cities that had power. Um, I would like to really reference, I mean, we had staff members that went out and got Jimmy John's for, um, some of our public work staff because there were cities where you could go and get that. I really think we need to make sure that we have a preparation plan, not just for the person who's going to provide the food to our staff, but also having, um, potential food on hand. I, I think that is an area that as much as we can say this was some success on, um, it pointed out a weakness to me. And I think that's an area that we need to be prepared for. Similarly, uh, power adapters was another one. I saw Gus Huanah go out and buy a bunch of power adapters for the resilience hub, but again, only because neighboring cities had power and stores open. Another area that I know we have talked about, um, and I heard at the EOC meetings, but I just wanted to make sure we highlight here, it feels like we really need a centralized area where we can communicate about closed roadways. Um, and this, not only to the public, but we had requests from our partner agencies with Eastside Fire and Rescue, the school district. Eastside Fire and Rescue, the school district, King County, and companies like PSE and Comcast, who really needed a way to understand what roadways were open and closed. And I think that's an important aspect that I learned from this emergency. And then I will second the, or third the communications as a potential problem. I would love to be able to identify future areas where we would plan to put word on the street notifications so that we could communicate that to the public ahead of time so that there's an expectation of if there is an emergency, this is where you go for power and warming, this is where you go for information. And I think those types of things would be important. One more, Councilmember Hall?
Yeah, one more thing. I think I was able to join like a handful of the EOC meetings on my phone when Teams was working on my phone. And I remember during, this is a question for you, Jared. I remember during one of the first ones, you had talked about how like everyone was on the streets. Like everyone had left home, they're on the streets. It was making it very difficult for first responders, it was making it difficult for public works to get to where they needed to remove debris. Is that something where we see training and awareness programming with the community could help in times of those kinds of crisis? Stay home if you can or in kind of the field and space of emergency management, is that just kind of an accepted, like that just happens post-emergency? Like how much do you think we can actually affect people staying home so that way we can respond to what we need to within the city?
Yeah, that's a great question. You know, I think, I think we can, one, do a better job at making sure that that is the message, right? And making sure that everyone is aware that, you know, there's actually a public safety type risk, right? When, when people are on the streets driving around, right, trying to get wherever they are, when signals are darkened and the likes, right? I think that's, that's certainly a message that we should include in our future preparedness type products. But, you know, I think we're all, you know, pretty aware that, you know, everyone is going to make their own decisions, right, following a disaster and emergency. And so, you know, I think while it's important that we include, I think it is, there is some understanding that, you know, no matter how much we say it, right, there will be, that interference or that risk will probably accompany any major disaster similar to the bomb cyclone. But that's a great point, too. Thank you for highlighting that.
Thank you.
Okay, so going on to the second question, which is posed here as what level of emergency management staffing should the city pursue? But I think as city administrator Bob Quitt said, this isn't only about staffing. This is about referencing back to our retreat. It's about recognizing what the needs are maybe for the community and emergency management. So any thoughts here from council? Councilmember Ray?
I will get us going. I think from a staffing level, I think that there is a need for some additional emergency management related services straight away. I'm not 100% certain that we couldn't meet some of that need with existing capabilities, particularly related to our communications team. That's why I asked the question about, on that 20%, 20-hour model, could those services be provided with someone without heavy emergency management capabilities? Now, in a perfect world, I would say let's, let's invest heavily here because this is really important public safety thing. Unfortunately, for everything we invest in emergency management means we have to not spend in some other area. And it is hard enough right now to figure out where we're going to cut back. So I think, you know, in the short term, I think there's, we can move the needle on the education stuff using existing resources. That's my first piece of, I don't know if it's feedback or insight. My second piece is, with the exception of the bomb cyclone, which seemed to just pick on Isaguas, most disasters are regional in nature and not city-specific. And so what I would encourage us to look at from a disaster management perspective is not what is Isaguas going to do, but what is Isaguas going to do as part of the region to respond to a disaster? So I'd be thrilled if we can take the lead and we can push this to deputy president De Michele's comments about, you know, what are we going to do without FEMA? I mean, FEMA is great because it's a great risk sharing pool where we take, you know, all 370 million people who live in the United States and we create a risk pool. So when there's a disaster someplace, we've got the resources to help them. We have 40,000 people, we can't create that same kind of risk pool to respond. But the best I think we can do is really to drive a regional response planning and regional response resources. And if we can take the lead on that, I would be very proud of the city of Isagua.
Thank you. As I analyze the proposal potentially to look at adding to the robust nature of our emergency preparedness, one of the things that comes to my mind is that organizations or armies are always trying to fight the last battle. And in emergency management, to me, it seems that we need to kind of anticipate what the new battle is going to be or the new disaster is going to be. So while not making any judgments on the preliminary proposal that's here, I think one of the things that I'd like to see is, is how the new positions, whichever one we do select, helps us prepare for other emergencies that might be outside of just the cyclone or just this area. As, as councilmember Ray points out, we need to be a regional partner potentially in a wider disaster that hits the area. So I know that Jared spends a great deal of time thinking about the what-ips and thinking about how we can best respond with the resources that we have. If we're going to potentially think about adding resources through any of these three positions, I would like to see how adding that position adds to our ability to fight that next war, so to speak, and be prepared for that next disaster in ways that perhaps we're not thinking about right now, but we probably need to because the climate is getting more, you know, unstable. And it does lead to either wildfires or windstorms or other big storms for us. And so I think we need to be thinking about the next battle along the way. Thank you.
Councilmember Jing?
Great, thank you. Yeah, I want to second some of the points about, you know, we're just in such a fiscally uncertain environment, so any investments that we want to make, we have to be really, you know, what's the word, intentional about those. And looking at, you know, at this 20-hour per week kind of staffing level, things like disaster skills training, community events, seems like we do have a good network of folks in the community who are trained by CERT. Is there any way that we could potentially tap into that volunteer network to kind of, you know, get out in the community and do those types of things? And also I know that managing volunteers is also something that takes time, so maybe that's not something that's reasonable, you know, just to take on with no additional funding. But I would like to see, you know, because there's only so much that like city staff can do. And if we're able to leverage volunteers, maybe that would be part of, you know, the job description of this 20-hour per week part-time person. But yeah, I'm interested in learning more about how we, you know, think about like leveraging our community organizations, even, you know, just leveraging people who are in different neighborhoods who, you know, are connected within their communities. Like living up in Tallis, we don't really actually have a community group like the Highlands Council up in the Highlands. Like we have our HOA, but that's different. So, you know, I think part of, part of what, kind of the exercise in, you know, building the community disaster resilience is also, you know, the social aspect and building those community ties. And I think that's going to have to, I mean, you know, that's not necessarily something that like the city government can like impose from above, but you know, how can we like leverage our resources to do things like that is something that I would want to see a bit of emphasis on.
Councilmember Hall?
Yeah, very similarly, I'm intrigued, Jared. I mean, I think it's interesting. I think when, you know, where I was kind of sitting at the council retreat when I, like many of us up here, prioritized like emergency management and public safety going in the future was, let's, let's not make cuts here if we need to make cuts in the future and prioritizing that. But I think you've, you've shown us some interesting need here. The disaster training, community events, broader awareness around resiliency hubs seems so spot-on and important, though, because especially in light of like larger, more regional disasters like have been mentioned, like if those happened, at the end of the day, it's your neighbors who are going to be taking care of you, right? It's your neighbors who you're checking on, checking in on. So you want to make sure everyone has their kits, everyone knows basic CPR and stop the bleed and these kinds of things that are really important. So I see immense value in this kind of skills training and, and the bringing of people together. Like you said, you know, certain communities, like was said in the Highlands, have the benefit of having those kind of programming arms that can bring people together, but not everyone does. So perhaps that is a reason to invest in, maybe starting with a part-time worker, to be able to bring more people together and, and bring everyone's awareness of how to respond in an emergency up. I don't necessarily know if the mid-buy is the appropriate time to make changes in staffing, though. So that's like, I think, kind of where I sit at the moment. I see that there's a lot of value here. Would it maybe make more sense to approach this as we move into the next biennium? I'm not sure. I feel like I could maybe be convinced either way, but that's just where my head sits at the moment.
Deputy Council President De Michele?
Thank you. I agree with a lot of what's been said. And I'll just weigh in and say that in a perfect world, as councilmember Ray said, we would, we'd go with the full-time person and, but we're not in a perfect world right now at all. So sort of, I certainly see the need. And so I think that some kind of increase in staffing, I can support. At this point, I just can't commit to the level until we have more data. I like the idea of the regional sharing of, of emergency management. We have a model already in the sustainability department where we are cooperating with all of the east side cities on sustainability. And maybe we can leverage off of that model and see what we can do in the emergency management arena as well. And then I like the idea, the ideas that have been brought forth that maybe by developing these emergency management systems, there are other applications for those systems internally as well as externally that gives us more rationale for going with a more robust position there. If we could figure out how some of these systems could support other arenas in the, in the city, it would be, I think, then very advantageous to be adding a full-time person. So again, Jared, thank you so much for your careful analysis of this and for the explanation about what, what this position would do. Thanks.
Okay. So when I look at this information, I step back to what problem are we trying to solve? And so the problem that I thought of that we were trying to solve or address at the retreat was not only, hey, we shouldn't make cuts to emergency management, but also I want to make sure that we are better prepared for emergencies throughout the community. One of the things that the bomb cyclone showed me was that we could maybe support one resilience hub, but that we didn't have something that met everyone's needs in the areas that they were at, particularly if some of those bridges were not to hold in those cases. So I think one of the outcomes I would want to achieve from any additional funding in the emergency management area isn't necessarily community member preparedness. I think that is key, but it isn't the big thing that I have on my mind after that emergency. It's things like warming centers and more locations throughout the city. It's having emergency water and food for our staff on hand and making sure that we have those investments that are needed. And so that would be my direction, looking at what maybe some of our needs are in this area. I also think I agree with the concept of if we could combine the concept of some of the community engagement with other communications needs that I see in our city, I think we could potentially meet some of those needs together with that skill. I think the other thing for me, though, is looking at this, we're in just the first Q2 of a two-year budget cycle. And I would be, have a very difficult time agreeing to adding a full-time or part-time staff member between that portion of that timing in the budget and the fact that we are $3.8 million in the hole. And so both of those things, I think you've heard a lot of caution from the council right now in recognizing what our financial situation is. So any other thoughts, Councilmember Hall?
Just really quickly to ditto what you said around an emphasis on resilience hubs. I know this is already a major emphasis of yours, Jared. So I was actually just wondering if sometime in the future you could provide counsel with kind of an email update of where we're at in the process of sending up the new ones and, and all that good stuff.
Absolutely. Yeah, I'd be happy to share all that information with you all.
Excellent. Well, Jared, thank you very much for taking time while you're out of state to give us an update on the windstorm follow-up and the fact that you've done an excellent after-action report and communicated some of those needs. Is there anything that city administration needs? Seeing a head shake from Wally?
No, thank you very much. This is exactly what we were hoping for this conversation. We'll take it under advisement and move forward.
Excellent. Okay, Jared, we'll give you the rest of your night. And we are going to move on to the next item, which is COM 0136, First Quarter Update, presented by Andrea Snyder, our deputy city administrator.
Hi, I'm Andrea Snyder, deputy city administrator. And I want to present what we're calling a first quarter update. This isn't on our work plan. It's really just looking at what are some of the factors and considerations at play as we think about budget, as we think about financial sustainability, which I know we've already talked about a lot tonight. So we're kind of taking a step back from the conversation we just had on emergency management and looking at some of the things that were, that are factors for our consideration as we look at what lies ahead for us when we think about our budget, because budget is really a year-round activity. It's a biennial budget, but it's something that we manage throughout the year, especially given the fact that we had such a difficult budget that we recently passed that included a lot of cuts. This is something that we want to keep a really good eye on moving forward through the next biennium. So tonight, we'd like to talk a little bit about the national landscape, what's going on in the federal government, what are some of these macro conditions that are affecting us more locally? State legislative update, this legislative session just concluded last night, so we have a small update from those efforts and where the city, where some of the city wins were as a result of this legislative session. Also, we're looking at a city budget update. We don't have a lot of the first quarter data yet. As you all know, that data tends to lag, but we can give a report, quick report about how we closed 2024. And then looking at some of the next steps and the future conversations we'd like to have with council regarding managing of the budget and what those priorities are. So the direction that we're looking for tonight is really discussion and any feedback that you may have on exploring new revenue sources as enabled by the state. Those have been evolving since when I wrote this presentation and we'll give some updates on those tonight. And then any feedback you have on potential budget additions to address council priorities. I know we just had that in-depth conversation about emergency management. That's just one of those components that we're also considering moving forward. So we'll go into more depth about that a little bit later. So as we look at the federal and national landscape, it's similar to some of the things that we discussed when we had our council retreat. So the future of grants continues to be difficult to predict. We are getting different stipulations on those federal grants. Some of that guidance is changing and we expect that guidance to continue to change throughout the year. So something that we're also thinking up, thinking about as we draft our capital improvement plan and look at funding sources for that, also things to think about for our budget. Sound transit and light rail, also something that's heavily federally, that heavily relies on federal grants. And so while we continue to prioritize light rail and continue to try to get as much regional transit as possible, it's really uncertain whether the level of federal grants that has been available for sound transit is going to continue into our future. So something that we're thinking about. something that we're thinking about. Environmental regulations are also uncertain. We have been participating with PFAS cleanup. We have a lot of robust environmental protections and regulations in Washington State, especially here in Issaquah. We're just uncertain what's going to happen on a federal level as that keeps changing and interpretations of federal law keep changing as well. And of course, the economy remains hard to predict. It's not any clearer now than it was when council met for the retreat what's going to happen in the economy. So we're trying to be conservative with our predictions for revenues and really thinking about where sales tax is headed, business and occupation tax is headed, and thinking that with our conservative projections and estimates, when we formed the '25 and '26 budget, we're going to continue to be really conservative on those moving forward because the economy is so hard to predict. And quick state legislative update. This is on Issaquah-specific items. I think you also have received a legislative update from our lobbyist Shelley Helder. Our lobbyist and our staff person who usually works these issues are both out today. So if you have specific questions, I will do my best to try to answer them, but we may have to come back with a little bit more information at a later date. So just to see where we left off with the end of the legislative season, we have funding for SR 18 and the widening and safety improvements for '25, '27, as well as '27 through '29. You can see there's funding set aside for that. And there's also future funding that was discussed as part of this effort. So that was successful. $88,000 for biometric monitoring for incarcerated persons. That's a grant that we would anticipate getting, so we're successful with that. We had a request also for 2.7 million for the E-City Gov Alliance Digital Permitting System upgrade. Unfortunately, that was something that was not selected for funding by the state legislature. But $100,000 for Creeks to Peaks, we got that. Funding to support the Bomb Cyclone recovery. This one was really big for us, especially considering the recent denial for federal assistance. And so we had asked the state to help us with some of this. If you recall, we had requested $3.8 million from the federal government for recovery efforts, and the state legislature is providing us 1.4 million. So doesn't quite cover the entirety of what we had wanted from the federal government. There's some limitations with how we can spend that 1.4 million, but certainly helps decrease that gap that we were anticipating. So that's really good news for us. We didn't know if we were going to get that funding. We fought really hard for it, and that's really, really good news for us. Also, reappropriation for $3 million for the Issaquah Opportunity Center. We are successful in getting that, and that money is also through a different program. So it's become a little bit more flexible for us, which is also really good news. And PFAS mitigation funding. There's a reappropriation for 2 million and also an additional $2 million that was added to that. So as we have our partnership with Eastside Fire and Rescue and PFAS cleanup, we have some money available to both agencies, the city and Eastside Fire and Rescue, to help with that work over the next few years. Other items in the state legislative update, certainly there are many other laws in this. This is just kind of a sampling of some of the legislation that was passed. Increased flexibility on REIT, a real estate excise tax. That's the tax on real estate that the city gets and uses for capital funding and to help fund our infrastructure. So how we can spend some of those funds has become a little bit more flexible, including potential use on maintenance and other items. So that certainly helps us. But we still are being conservative in our estimates for REIT. It'd be great if we had more REIT to go around to help with some of our city budget issues, but increased flexibility is always going to be really helpful for local governments. We also, at the state legislature, I know this is something that council has discussed before, the condominium liability reform, and it's been something on our legislative agenda. That was also passed this session, preemption on parking minimums. Usually, cities determine the parking minimums in our jurisdictions. This is something that the state has decided. So we will have to revisit how this really affects our city code, and we will likely need to come back for revisions just to make sure that we are up to date and reflect what's requested by the state or what's required by the state. Also, transit-oriented development. Issaquah, the city of Issaquah had asked for clarification on what a major transit stop is, and we were able to get that clarification. It was redefined with the state legislature. Any questions so far? Public safety sales tax was also passed. This allows council to vote in a tenth of a percent of sales tax and dedicate those funds specifically to criminal justice. Previously, a public safety sales tax was permissible with a vote of the people, but now it's something that can be done council-matically. So in addition to that local sales tax revenue for the city for criminal justice, there's also a grant program that the state would be starting that the city would potentially be able to tap into to help pay for trainings, recruitment and retention of officers, and behavioral health personnel, and all kinds of stuff that I think we're still getting some clarity on as that language has changed recently. We would anticipate about $2.2 million annually. This is the same as the transportation benefit district sales tax that council passed a few years ago.
Got a question. Deputy Council President DeMichele?
Yes, just a quick question. Would any of that money, and maybe it's too early to know, could be applied to our community court?
I believe that some of it could. It depends on what exactly those expenses were. But we can get more clarification on that.
Do you have something else? Okay.
Great. So those are some of the things that, on a state legislature, on a state level, let's talk a little bit about the city budget and where we ended up in 2024 at the end of the year. So here we have the second column is what was in the adopted budget. The third column was what was in the revised budget. And then if you recall, we came to you in October with a forecast of our expenditures and our revenues and a lot of cuts that we were making to the revised budget. And then actual is, of course, where we ended 2024. These are unedited, or I'm sorry, unaudited, and I have to provide some disclaimers here from our finance team, who always gets a little nervous about showing numbers that are preliminary. But so what I think the main message is, especially as you look at revenues and expenditures, which is the second and the third rows in this table, under revenues for the adopted budget, you can see 64.5 million roughly. We had anticipated maybe that increasing a bit more in the revised budget. And then as we were getting more revenue data in 2024, we decreased that. So actual, we ended up a little bit better than what we had forecasted, but still 2 million, 2.5 million less than what we had anticipated with the revised budget. And that's a pretty significant change for us. Also, less than what we had anticipated in fall of 2022 with the adopted budget. So those revenues are less, what we realized, and I want to make sure that we take note of that. Expenditures, also looking at that. We had anticipated with the increase in some of the revenues with the revised budget from the adopted budget, that we would increase some of those expenditures to 73 million. When we got more and more revenue data and when that revenue picture started to change, we came back to you in October of 2024, and we said, we're going to decrease some of our expenditures before the end of the year. We're not going to spend everything that we had planned on spending. And so you see that pan out in our actual numbers. 69 million, it's more similar to what was adopted, but a pretty significant decrease from what we had in the revised budget. And what you see with all of these, the adopted budget, the revised budget, forecasted and actual, is that those expenditures are greater than the revenues that we anticipated. And some of that was very intentional. We wanted to spend down some of the reserves that we had been building up and put that money back to work for the community. And that was under council direction. But as you know, if we continue to spend more than what we bring in in revenues, that's going to be a problem. And that's a trend that the city cannot bear over the long term. And that's one of the reasons why for the '25, '26 budget, we had to make significant cuts, including ongoing cuts and staffing reductions, as well as a small tax increase. So those measures that we took for '25 and '26, as we get that data from how we ended 2024, I think shows that these were reasonable and prudent measures that we took when we looked at the '25, '26 budget. So those are things that I think we anticipate moving forward with the uncertainty of the economy, uncertainty of grants, et cetera. We remain concerned that revenues are not outpacing our expenditures. In addition, there's always things that come up that cost money. Rarely do we get surprise revenues, but certainly there are surprise expenditures. So we've talked already about the Bomb Cyclone, $3.8 million. We are getting some money from the state, which decreases that burden. That's very good news for us. Jared did just talk about emergency management, the potential of adding money to that. We've already had that conversation. And we've also talked recently with council about flock cameras for Issaquah police. Those are those license plate reader cameras that we've had a discussion. That would be the initial cost for the first year, which would be installation and the maintenance costs or the operating costs, 73,000, a little north of 73,000, with $35,000 annually. That's just another cost. So at some point, we will need to figure out a way to pay for those if that's something that council wants to continue to pursue.
Got a question. Deputy Council President DeMichele?
Another quick question. The cost 73,500, how many cameras are we talking about?
Great question. This was for option one that was recommended in the last presentation. I don't know that off of the top of my head. There were a couple of different options. I can get back to you with that information.
Yeah, that'll be great. Thank you.
Great. So as we think about these anticipated additional expenses, how we would fund these things, that we anticipate that being a conversation for another time. The point of this evening is just to bring awareness to council, and our recommendation at this point is that we keep monitoring these issues that may affect the budget, come back to you, keep having these types of conversations, bringing awareness to them, getting some feedback on where your priorities lie, where your concerns may be. And we'd also recommend analyzing additional revenue options, which would be discussed at the July 12 City Council Retreat. So whether that would be the public safety sales tax that the state legislature just enabled for our consideration or other revenue sources. Next steps, that July 12 City Council Retreat, we'd love to come back to you and discuss a little bit more. We'll have more information on the budget update at that point with a few more data points on revenue that we've been able to collect in the first quarter. And we'd also be able to have more information on Bomb Cyclone recovery and what's happening at the federal level, which I think Jared just shared information that came out today. So we will look at potential ways to pay for the remainder of those costs that aren't covered by the state grant, and also provide more information on potential new revenue sources like the public safety sales tax.
We've only got one more slide.
Go for it. Deputy or council member, Ray?
Whatever the heck I am. I just want to rewind a little bit to the public safety sales tax. What are the restrictions on that if we were to impose that? I mean, public safety is a very, very broad topic. Within that context, are there limitations on what we can and can't spend that money on?
There's all kinds of limitations, including requirements that we must meet in order to, in order to take advantage of the tax and of the grant program. So there's certain certifications and trainings that our police officers need to receive. But you can see here what some of the eligibility is, especially around recruitment, retention of staff members, officers, both corrections officers as well as patrol officers. The monies can be applied to the things you see under the grant program, but also the public safety sales tax the city would collect, or all of those things are eligible expenses for us as well.
Great, thank you.
Okay, going on to that last slide of what the feedback is that you're looking for. So we're looking for feedback on exploring the new revenue sources, especially public safety sales tax, since that's a new one for council's consideration, and any feedback that you may have on the potential budget additions.
Okay, so we will start with questions. Is that what we have? Councilmember Hall?
Thank you very much. I have two questions, and one I see Director Dolly Walls on, and so that might be good for her. The parking minimums, one from the state level. I know for this biennium, when we were doing the budget, we had kind of a list, a scope of work within CPD of the different planning things that we would be going through as a city over the year. Do we have a sense yet of whether this parking minimums change means that we're going to have to reprioritize that list or anything? Or I'm just curious how much staff time we're going to need to invest in this. And it could be way too early. If it is, just say, Zach, it's really early. We'll find out later.
Sure, I could address that, Councilmember Hall. So this particular bill that passed gives cities of our size about three years for implementation, is our understanding. So we'll be looking deeply into this. In the meantime, we have some other items that got approved by state legislature last year that included, you know, not having more than 50% as structured parking requirements and such. So we will focus and prioritize those to be adopted in our IMC, in our municipal code, earlier, and then work through some of the latest ones subsequently.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much. And then the public safety sales tax authority now. I'm just curious, is that similar to, I remember back to the Affordable Housing Behavioral Health, 0.1% sales tax that we went out on, and it was like, cities had until X date to enact it and start to collect revenue before the county could have the authority over all the revenue. Is it something like that, or is it different? Because I know King County has already said that they're interested in pursuing this.
I believe that the city has the ability to levy the tax whenever. I don't believe that there's a time limit. I read the legislation, and I didn't see anything referring to a city time limit that we had to get it in before the county.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No? Okay, we have an opportunity for public comment. Any public comments on this item? Nobody online? Okay. And if we will go ahead into feedback. So the feedback are basically what is our interest in exploring new revenue sources as enabled by the state? And any feedback on potential budget additions to address council priorities? Who wants to start us off?
Councilmember Hall?
Sure, I can start us off. Thank you again for the presentation and for the work and for showing us year-end 2024 as well. I agree with kind of the remain concerned picture that you've painted, and I'm glad, not glad, but glad that we made the changes that we needed to going into this biennium. Starting with the second one, I think I would just caution against any major changes in spending in the budget, especially with the uncertainty around whether or not we'll find funding for the rest of the Bomb Cyclone recovery. There's still a collective bargaining agreement at Eastside Fire and Rescue. We don't necessarily know exactly where that will sit. So I just think as much as we can keep everything the same and not make major changes, in my mind, the better. The new revenue source that's been, that we've been given the authority by the state is interesting, very intriguing. I think it's something we should look into. I have been thinking we should look into a public safety levy, but any kind of having, I'm open to having the conversation around new revenue to support public safety needs in the city, and I'll leave it at that. So if this is part of that, and we look at it that way, that sounds great to me. So if this is part of that, and we look at it that way, that sounds great to me.
Councilmember Ray?
I concur with Councilmember Hall. Let's not kind of do a whole lot of resetting four months into the biennium. As it relates to new revenue sources, I am intrigued by the public safety sales tax potential. And I'm intrigued because there's a lot of, well, we spend an awful lot of money on public safety right now, and that is general fund dollars. And if we can use this sales tax to offset some of that general fund spend, that not only gives us some flexibility to expand our public safety spend, but it also gives us the ability to repurpose those dollars into general, other general fund areas. So that's why I was really curious about what the restrictions are. And, and is it a net new things only? Or is it, or is it one where we can do new services? And there's a lot of great stuff in there, like, like use of force training and escalation. I think we should be doing that anyway. But also is there an area where we can offset some of our current spend with this, the new sales tax and then use those dollars and divert them into other programs and areas?
Councilmember Joe?
Thank you. I'm in favor of looking at the sales tax increase of 0.1%. In September 23, when we were considering the, the benefit district, the transportation benefit district, it was pointed out that we're a regional player. And the deputy city administrator, Andrea Snyder, pointed out that the sales tax was sure that the increase does not solely fall on residents. And was quoted as, "What we understand is that Issaquah is a regional hub. That means we have a lot of people passing through as they stop and then go on to their final destination," Snyder said. A sales tax is the best way to get them to contribute to help pay for the, in this case, streets they use. But in this case, we're considering the protection that they are, have a benefit of as they shop and visit our parks and our city. So overall, I think that concept remains the same. And I think that as we go forward, we should keep that in mind as we look to have this tax potentially raise around 2.3 million dollars or somewhere in that area. Appreciate the discussion on that topic. In terms of budget additions, I think I'll lean on my comments on the prior discussion with the emergency management, that if we can show that the new position is going to enable us to have additional capabilities or enable us to plan for additional emergencies that we may not have thought of yet, but we think are coming. I think it's a good idea, but I'll wait to see how that conversation turns out. Thank you.
Councilmember Zheng?
Yeah, I wanted to know what everyone said about, you know, definitely interested in exploring this new revenue source. And I think, if my understanding is right, you know, just exploring it at this time doesn't mean that we're necessarily going to approve it. But I think, you know, just given how huge a proportion of our budget, our public safety is, I think definitely, you know, looking, this, with this 2 million would be like less than 20% of our overall public safety budget. And so I think, you know, we, and that's something that our community really prioritizes. So I think it's important to look into that at the very least. And then on the potential budget additions, I concur with everyone else that, you know, we're kind of, you know, early in the biennium, want to be very cautious just because, I mean, the economic uncertainty, even within the last three weeks, has reached like new. I don't, I don't want to see never, never before seen heights, but it's, it's been a while since we've had this level of uncertainty, and, you know, we want to be pretty cautious.
Councilmember Mertz?
Thank you. So I don't want to douse the sales tax with cold water, but I, I want to point out that we have one of the most regressive tax structures in the nation, and that sales taxes are the poster children of regressive taxes. Now, if it's the only levers that we have, and we've, all seven of us, plus our mayor, has said that public safety is super important, then we do what we have to do. But I, I would ask that the administration continue to look for other less regressive options as we, as we consider implementing the sales tax. And I agree with everybody else that new additions right now, I think we should just tread cautiously. I don't think that there's any, anybody in America who tells you they know what the economic landscape's going to look like in six months is, is selling you snake oil. So let's just keep doing the essential stuff and batting the hatches. Thanks.
Deputy Council President?
Yes, I agree with all of the comments from my fellow council members. I do want to explore the new revenue for, for public safety. My interest, as you might guess from the question I asked, would be the behavioral health aspect of the funding. And if that's one place that we could spend that funding, I definitely see a need there. And particularly at the community court, that would be a tremendous addition to our criminal justice system. So I am interested in that, but I totally agree. We're sounding very together on this, and that is we really need to proceed with caution because it is just such a volatile environment out there right now. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will echo much of, excuse me, much of what you have heard here. Councilmember Mertz, very much appreciate you continuing to remind us how much of a regressive tax situation we are in, in the state, and how sales taxes are one of the worst burdens of that. And so very much appreciate that as a portion of the commentary. I will also add to what Councilmember Joe said about this being a regional, oh, wait a second. A regional hub for shopping as an opportunity. Some of our most recent reports showed that of the shoplifting and the shoplifting uplift that we have had, only 16% of that was from Issaquah residents. And so we are also experiencing a regionalization of crime and shoplifting in the area. And so being able to have some of those costs not go entirely on our residents, but also on the regional people that are in the area and shop in our area is a really important aspect to public safety funding. So I appreciate that aspect of that as well. I think it's something that we should look at. We, as a city, are very limited on what new revenue we can look at. And every year, our property tax ratio and the rate that any of that does on people's houses, it reduces each year. We only get a 1% growth in that cost, and so everyone pays a smaller and smaller portion. So any opportunity that we have to look at something, that funds something that is so important to our communities, such as public safety, would be of interest to me. And I will also second the, hey, I'm cautious to make any changes right now. In fact, I'm more likely expecting something in July where we're looking at either potential cuts or just caution, particularly when we're talking about our capital improvement plan and projects. So I would want to have that information before we looked at any addition. Any other comments? Councilmember Zheng?
Yeah, I think the comment that Councilmember Mertz made about, you know, the regressiveness of sales taxes is very important. And in terms of exploring new revenue sources, you know, Councilmember Hall mentioned the potential for doing a public safety levy. Is that something that could be explored as an option? As, you know, because that's property tax, which is less regressive than sales tax? And I know that, you know, that would have to be approved by voters as well. But is that something that we could also include in the exploration of revenue sources?
Sure. Yeah, we can include that. Thank you.
Okay, yeah. Okay, any other feedback on this item? Okay, does the administration have what you need?
Yes, thank you very much.
And if I could just add, thank you first of all for the discussion tonight. July 12th is the next date, so we'll do all that we've talked about this evening. Between now and then, you get to do the capital improvement program. And so each of the standing committees will have presentations during the month of May on the CIP. Not surprisingly, there are lots of challenges there as well. But we'll be asking the committees some very specific questions about programmatic items within the CIP. So you'll hear that. At next month's Committee of the Whole, you will hear from Dale Markey Crimp. She has completed her analysis of jail, jail operations. That's a very, another real key piece on the operating side, so you'll hear from her on that. You'll also hear about the city survey. We've gotten the results of the community survey, so she'll be sharing that, plus performance measures. So piece by piece, we're marching down the, the calendar to get you to July with some, you know, perhaps more firmer recommendations from the administration on actions to take through the end of '25. So just want to put this all in context. We appreciate the time that you're spending to be thoughtful in taking this all in pieces rather than us come to you in the fall and say, whoops, the world's changed and we're in trouble. So thank you for tonight. And next month, you'll be busy with the CIP and other items at the Committee of the Whole.
Indeed. Okay, with that, I think we've got good of the order. Any announcements coming up? Otherwise, I would close the meeting at 8:12 PM. Thank you. Oh, I will mention that afterwards.